Thank you so much. So I will call this meeting to order. Appreciate everybody coming together here for this sort of special meeting. And glad we were able to do this before January. Just wanted to give everybody some time in order to be able to absorb or ask any questions of the of the proposals that Laura is going to share with us that folks have seen in advance. Hopefully, you've had a chance to take a look at those. Just in case there is anything that, any questions to be answered? Because I believe we want to bring this forward to the full board for the January meeting. So with that, I think if there's nothing, as I said, sort of technical else that I need to cover, I will turn it over to Laura to lead us through the proposals.
Great. Well, thank you. And I also just want to thank everyone for accommodating me. Not being able to make it at the last meeting. I really appreciate everyone being able to make the time today. So we do have four legislative proposals that I did send to you all in advance. With everything going on this year, we did not have a terribly ambitious legislative agenda. Because we do have a lot of stuff going on, but I'm going to go through the four of them. Hopefully, you've had a chance to look. I did ask members of the team here to be on just in case you had any types of questions that were technical or that I couldn't answer. So we do have other members from the SDE team here to help us through it. So we'll just dive right in. The first legislative proposal is coming to us from our academic shop. And as you will likely remember, last session, the legislature passed a bill that requires the department to create a model K eight curriculum spanning all grades and all subjects, which the department is fully in support of. And we were glad to be tasked with doing it. However, we were only given a deadline of January 1 of 2023 to get the job done. And so what we're asking for is an extension of another year beyond that. And by comparison, the African American and Latino studies took roughly two years for CIRC to complete, and that was only the one course. And so to do the whole K eight curriculum, we really do think we're going to be required to have this extra year, especially to get in that really meaningful stakeholder engagement. And so that's the first proposal. I don't know if anyone has any questions.
Wait, you said to do one course? Then they put together two courses? An African American course and a Latino studies course?
Irene, I don't know if you want to jump in. I thought that they were one course that were combined together.
Yeah, two semesters.
To probably do your comment.
Two semesters, yes.
You said it took two years to develop one course. But they took two years and involved two courses.
No, so they, they're two semester courses. So one semester, that's a half year. So it's two semesters, but combined, it's a one, it's one course of study for one year. So it's a one year, one credit course.
Not one course, it's two courses. Yeah.
So Laura, what actually are we proposing to the board?
So we're just proposing for an extension of the deadline. We're asking for one additional year from January 1 of 2023, which is the deadline that they've given us now, and extending it to January 1 of 2024.
Oh, okay. You know, I have just a technical question on, on what happens eventually with the board. One, on the, on the, on the Black and Latino Studies course, I went back and looked at the minutes because I was writing an article for the NASB magazine. And we didn't actually approve that. We just received it. And I just wondered if, if you can explain, you know, what we're actually going to do with this course. Is that clear?
Yeah, Irene, what exactly went before the?
No, we didn't actually approve it when, according to the minutes. And Al and the chairman, he said, he said that we're receiving this.
We followed the process that was outlined, and so we came before the board. I think it was, it was December. You know, we had to come before the board for a certain date for acceptance. Um, so maybe it's and there was a unanimous vote, I think, too.
Right.
Yeah, so I'm not quite sure. I'd have to go back myself. But specific to this, I think that still has to be defined. And certainly working with the commissioner of how all the model curriculum will come forward. If we're going to use a committee structure like academic assessments and I'm sorry, academic standards and assessment, and then we go to full board, but it's not outlined in Public Act 21 dash two. So I think that's for us or for you and with the commissioner to decide how model curriculum will come forward.
Yeah.
There's no break just yet, so we haven't missed anything.
Okay, I don't want to take up time, but I'm just curious about what our power is and what, what the process is, because the legislature approved that. The legislature, you know, approved the program and then I don't know what we actually did. We just, you know, we didn't actually approve it. We just received it. So anyway, I just wanted to bring that up.
I think, so your question, again, we would have to determine with yourself and with the commissioner of what that process might be. But it also speaks to having that extension so that we can follow that process and that procedure of bringing all model curriculum forward if we need to through a committee structure and then to the board.
Yeah, well, I'll be interested to see what actually emerges when we take our vote in a year. Yeah.
I'm going to part that, not having done my homework completely, but tell me again why you are talking about pushing this back a full year. What's the rationale?
Yeah, I mean, Irene can go into a little more detail, but I think a lot of it has to do with the amount of stakeholder engagement that we want to be able to participate in. And just the amount of time that it takes to, to create the individual courses. But Irene, if you want to add a little more detail.
Right. So the way it's written in Public Act 21 two, we are looking at creating that scope and stance for every content area in grades K through eight. So you're looking at over 270 units of study. And the time that goes into creating that, and we're looking at alignment standards as well. Also, every content area should require, it does require, we want to have stakeholder engagement. So we've already started the focus groups in these areas with teachers and administrators and with CIRC. And that just takes a lot of time and process because also as questions come up in those focus groups, those design teams, it might also lead to what are the resources available? So using the African American studies as a, as a model, as a benchmark or a barometer, if you will, there's a lot of work that has to go in for kindergarten, one, two, three, all the way up to eighth grade for math, science, social studies, ELA. And we're also looking at personal finance in grades K through five as well. And computer science and how that gets embedded. Additionally, this public act also is expecting the procurement or like the collection of resources that also embed Native American studies in all grades K through eight, as well as nutrition and first aid, cancer awareness and other topics that are very sensitive like LGBTQIA. So there's, there's a lot of work that we're committed to. And so we thought it would make sense to request an additional year. And then it would be kind of like a waterfall process, which means that as the curriculum is developed, we would follow a process that's determined with the board and the commissioner of how we get approval going forward.
Irene, what progress are we able to demonstrate? What have we done thus far? I think it'd be helpful to be able to show we've done some, some progress, but we've made some progress but need more time.
Absolutely. So from a stakeholder perspective, like an organizational approach, we have established a structure of like an advisory committee so that stakeholders are at the table to guide the project. We have established six design leadership teams for the core content areas. And each ed consultant at the department is the lead for that. And based on those conversations, then we go into curriculum development teams. We're not there yet. We, again, we're in that information phase. However, grade six through eight math, because we were able to use units that were previously designed, we have renewed those. So those will kind of, again, think of it as like a waterfall. Six, eight math will come first. We are exploring digital citizenship in of, in one of the stakeholder groups because there is a model curriculum that has been done nationally. So we're reviewing that to see if that could be adopted. Science, we're doing the same, but there's our national model curriculum out there. So we're, again, talking as a stakeholder group to see if that could be something we could adopt. ELA, we want to kind of build off of what has already been developed previously. So the point is, is like not, not everything is very linear and that it's all kind of like packaged and going forward. That's, that's why I use the, that waterfall effect. And the other one that, just looking at my notes here. Sorry. I think I said, I mentioned personal finance already. So those are, that's the progress we've made so far. I mean, I can go into more detail if you want more detail.
You know, you brought a lot of other curricular items into the picture. But I'm focused back on African American studies. And right now it is going to be in the high school. And the thought is to bring it into K to eight. Okay, now. But you want to push that back to 2023? Why not bring this along? In incrementally, or, I mean, go, go first to five to eight and then moving down the line or something of that nature? Why, why are we waiting?
It's not that we're waiting. It's just, we have one education consultant for each of those content areas. And when you're working with a K five group, you're not necessarily working with a K eight group at the same time because the needs are different. Because the students are different and the structure is different. So it's not that we're delaying the release. It's just we are trying to manage this, this awesome project. Like I said, it's, you're looking at over 270 units by, by each content area. 324 weeks of learning that we're trying to design. And if we don't take a little bit more time, we want to get this right. We want it to be a model, not only for Connecticut, but for the nation. And we're looking at 54 course descriptions, 54 school sequences. That's just by the numbers.
Can I ask? Irene, can I ask? So as the, the, the original legislation and the timeframe that was put onto it, was that a timeframe that the department had suggested, or was that a timeframe that the legislature had impressed onto, onto the department?
When we were in the, we did not recommend that. We actually suggested to go another year as an out year. And I don't think at the time it was accepted. So it was landed at, they landed on 23.
All right. And as you've now gotten into the work and with the resources that you have, that's what's bringing the department back to this place of the recommendation to extend it for a year?
Correct. And like I said, we, we have a project plan that's already spelled out of like in all the different layers of work with, with a timeline, with deliverables, and I hold each ed consultant and team member accountable for that so that we meet those deadlines. So the work is ongoing. It's just it's just, we just need that additional time, right? To, I think you know what I mean with project planning.
Yeah. All right. So for this particular, this particular issue, this particular proposal, I don't remind me, Mike and Laura, in order for you to be able to move forward and bring this to the board in January, aside from getting the questions from us, do you need sort of a proposal by proposal approval to move forward?
Yeah, typically what we've done in the past is I will compile your questions and try and get answers to those questions in time for the next meeting. But in order for me to bring it to the full board in January, I would need a vote of this board or this subcommittee.
Okay.
Recommending that it be brought for the whole board.
Okay. Did I mess up Robert's rules by not having somebody actually raise this first before talking about it? Given that you need a formal vote?
No, I mean, I think that this would be like any presentation that'd be provided to the committee. That's just part of that presentation that Laura is making.
Okay.
You can do it either way.
Okay, great. So folks have lodged their questions and concerns. Any other sorts of concerns that folks want to, want to raise from the department before a vote to move this forward? Okay. So we need to then vote by, by hand or by yea or nay to move forward? I am thinking perhaps by, I can't see everybody on the committee on the screen. So I think we're going to have to go one by one. Does that make sense?
Do we need a motion for, what is the motion that we're voting on?
The motion is to bring the first proposal to the full board in January.
Okay.
All right. Do we need to move that?
I think you can do, yeah, somebody needs to make a motion, second it, and I think a voice vote is probably sufficient.
Oh, okay.
All right, so we have Woody moving and was it Bonnie seconding?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Mike, can you read each of the names for us?
Well, I thought we were going to do a voice vote.
No.
We can't see everybody and nor necessarily hear everybody. So I think we should go one by one.
I want to read the names.
All right. Don. Ms. Harris.
Epstein.
Mr. Ashley.
Yay.
Ms. Prue.
Yes.
Ms. Dubois-Walton.
Yes.
Ms. Burr.
Yes.
Ms. Seavey.
Yes.
Seavey, sorry. There are a couple of phone numbers. I can't, I don't know who they are.
I think we've called all of the voting members of.
Okay, I wasn't sure if there was anybody participating from the committee on by telephone or not. Okay.
Okay. All right. So this passes to move forward for Laura to bring it to the board in January. All right.
It definitely is moving forward. I do think we should note that there, there is some concern that this is not moving as expediently as members of the board would, would like to see.
Moving too slow.
Okay. I hope ours works.
Don has been on Zoom all day.
To the point.
All right. Yes, noted, noted with that. That moving it forward to, to an agreement with the year, but I think the members of this committee would also be interested in, in being kept updated in terms of its progress so that we, we do meet, if not exceed, that timeline. As in, in the positive direction, not in the negative.
Understood.
Great, thank you. Okay, so Laura, do you want to move to your second?
Sure. I think if, if there's nothing that would preclude me from doing this, I know I've done it in the past. I think we can take up the next two as, as kind of one item together. They both come to us from school nutrition. And what they would do is allow the commissioner to modify the requirements of statutes that pertain to both the Healthy Food Initiative Grant Program and the School Breakfast Grant Program during a public health emergency to ensure that the grant funding can still be issued to participating school districts as intended by the original statute. This last, or during the pandemic, we did have executive orders that allowed this to happen. And so we would just like to have something in statute that gives the commissioner the ability to do this on her own without there having to be an executive order to make sure that these grant payments can be made to participating districts.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, discussion? All right, hearing none. Mike, can I have you go around the proverbial table for us again?
I'm sorry, I had to step out for a moment. Did anyone make a motion?
They did.
Yes.
We are, we are moving to vote.
Okay, very good. Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Ashley?
Aye.
Ms. Prue?
Yes.
Ms. Dubois-Walton?
Yes.
Ms. Burr?
Yes.
Ms. Seavey?
Yes.
And is Mr. Let me get the list. I think your other colleague might actually be Mr. Treffery?
Treffery.
Treffery? I thought I saw his name, but perhaps not. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Okay, so that brings us to the fourth and final.
Yes, fourth and final. Thank you. So this proposal is from our talent office, and I know we have at least Chris Todd on here to help us answer any questions that you might have. This is a two-part proposal. The first part of the proposal is the, the more straightforward part. It comes well, first, it's, it's simply extending the professional educator certificate from five years to 10 years. It's, it, there's no cost to renew the certificate, so there's no loss in revenue for the state. And by moving it from five to 10 years, it's actually just freeing up time for our certification analysts. And it also alleviates the burden on educators to have to go every five years instead of just being able to do it every 10 years. So that's the first part of the proposal. I don't know if we want to do questions on that and then move on to the second part or just do the whole thing and have questions at the end. If there are any questions on that part.
Do folks feel anything burning on the first, or should we put it all together? I'm going to pause for a moment. All right. Why don't you move forward with both and then we'll come back to questions?
Sure, sure. Yep. So the second part of the proposal is removing an unnecessary time constraint and financial burden for folks to obtain their advanced degrees quickly. What it's doing is, it is, it's the, hold on one second, I'm sorry. Oh, right. By, it's evaluating the preparation and eligibility requirements that were in effect at the time of the person's original initial or provisional certificate was issued when they're trying to renew that certificate. So they're not, they can maintain their current certificate, but there, there's no limit on the number of times they can retain their current certificate, but they're not allowed to advance to the next certificate until they meet all of the requirements that are required for that certificate. I hope I'm explaining that correctly. It is a little complicated. Chris can probably help bail me out on this.
No, Laura, you did, you did a great job. So this, the second part is to really just streamline the process. Right now, as Laura said, educators are limited to the number of times they can renew their certificates if they haven't worked under it. And when they meet that limit, we have to evaluate all coursework and testing. And so we feel it's really detrimental to individuals that are certified to teach, don't teach right away, and then try to enter the, the career later on in life. They have to go back and make up coursework or testing requirements. It also creates unintended consequences for educators who, in all other aspects, are highly effective in the classroom. Life circumstances just haven't allowed them to get their master's degree within that eight years that they have. And we have no legal mechanism beyond extending their certificate for just a very small amount of time, which is a ton of paperwork on, on the Certification Offices Act. So what, what this proposal does is it streamlines the process. It allows educators to maintain the certificate that they received and renew that certificate at that current level until they have completed the requirements to advance to the next level.
Are you saying there's a requirement that teachers have to get their master's degree within so many years?
Yeah, so right now in the state of Connecticut, you have three years under your initial to finish team and advance to the provisional. Once you get the provisional license and you're working under it, you only have eight years to complete your master's degree. Which the vast majority of educators do, but we also recognize that we're asking educators to do this at the same time in their life that oftentimes they're starting families. They're, you know, they're, they're getting married. There's a lot of other life things and, you know, we acknowledge and we're hearing more and more of educators that are coming into the profession with substantial loans from their undergraduate program. And then the, the concern they have of rolling right into a master's program just to complete that requirement. So it wouldn't, it would still require the master's degree to get your professional level certificate. It doesn't change that threshold. It just gives educators flexibility if they need to renew where they currently are until they complete those requirements.
Okay. Can I ask a question?
Done.
I understand that flexibility. And, and I would have really appreciated it. Because I was not only starting a family, but I was coaching three sports and still had to go and get my masters in a certain amount of time.
As was, as was I, Mr. Harris. So.
Is, is there a limit? Or is it just limitless?
So, so it's a great question. Right now, we're proposing it as limitless. I actually think that the, the way the system is designed, the incentive for educators, as you know, to get their master's degree is they move up on the pay scale at, at the local level. And I, and what we see is the vast majority of educators try to expedite that process so that they can move up on the pay scale. Very few end up getting to that point when we're looking at overall percentages. So I think that just through natural desire to advance their pay, we're going to still see the vast majority of educators really only probably take advantage of this once within that eight-year cycle.
Okay. Thank you.
So I, I'm intrigued by this, just because I know I've been part of earlier conversations long ago, right about, about this requirement. And I hear what you're saying, and I'm curious as to, you know, what the interplay is between not only having the, the, the financial incentive, but the overlay of the eight-year requirement on that. And so removing that, you know, does that end up removing enough of the, of, I would more the, more the stick versus the carrot? And are we, are we ultimately, not being an educator, I just want to lodge the question, are we doing a disservice to our children by requesting this removal of the eight-year requirement?
So, so it's, I think it's a really fair question. And I guess what I would say is that right now the system forces a lot of educators to get master's degrees that may or may not ultimately improve their instruction in the classroom. And we know that that's true. We know a lot of educators jump into a master's just to satisfy the compliance piece of the master's requirement. And then often later on in their career, they look to explore a sixth year or another additional degree that better aligns with what their professional aspirations and interests are. So I think that what this does is it maintains the expectation that to be a professional educator in Connecticut, you have a master's degree. So in order to get to that professional level. However, it provides some opportunities for educators to slow that pace down a little bit, to choose master's programs that are either in alignment with their professional aspirations and growth, or at a time that maybe is more conducive to their, their families and life schedules.
Another, Malia, another unintended consequence of this fast-paced stuff is, you know, they jump into the master's program, then they jump into the six-year program, and all of a sudden realize, oh, I can make a lot of money in administration. So we end up losing a lot of good teachers because we are forcing them to get this advanced education, which they don't need to teach on that elementary level, you know? We lose a lot of good teachers that way. So.
From.
I applaud this effort. It's it's, it's a way of holding on to some teachers for a little bit longer.
And, and from the vast majority of cases that come through our office where educators are running up where educators are running up against that eight year window, I will tell you, they are heartbreaking situations. They are educators where they've lost a spouse unexpectedly or they've lost parents unexpectedly or they have loved ones that are fighting terminal diseases. And it's just the reality of of everything that's happening in life. And they're being kind of compounded because they're up against this this time dependent window in order for them to complete the requirements. And it's it's really hard from the bureau because we have educators that have exhausted hardships, that have exhausted balance of times. And it wasn't on any part of their own that they weren't doing their job, but they lose their teaching license and are now working as non certified support staff in the districts until they can complete the requirements for their master's degree. So I I again, I like I think I think, you know, to the extent that we're trying to alleviate some of the anxiety in that place and looking at staffing concerns. And it's really hard when you have a district that says this educator is amazing. Here's all the things that are happening in their life right now. But the law just doesn't allow us to give them any more wiggle.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions from the committee members on either part part A or part B? I know we we sort of just launched into the the B questions, but we still have the five to ten year um item that want to make sure that folks don't have any additional questions about.
What's the reason in that case for extending it to ten years?
Yeah, it's a great question, Mr. Ashley. So originally, the the current tiered system was designed when educators were required to get CEUs. So the five year renewal cycle for professional educators was dependent upon creating uh completing so many continuing education units within a given year. In two thousand and twelve, the department and and the state board got rid of the requirement for educators to maintain CEUs. So obviously, there's still the mandatory requirements for for eighteen hours of professional learning. But there we're no longer documenting that or keeping track of it. So really, at this point, there's there's no requirement to maintain your professional level certificate other than reapplying to the office at the time of expiration. So oftentimes, what we find is is a lot of our certified educators forget about it. It expires and then they have to go through the process of getting it back or an expedited processing. And it's a lot of, again, every five years, we do a huge, we're talking thirty to forty thousand certificates on a every five year cycle that come through the bureau and and really put a huge strain on our own capacity. So by stretching it out to a ten year cycle, it will help maintain that. We've also worked really closely with um the state police, with our own legal team to to bring in a in a background check process to ensure that all of our certificates, regardless of if they're applying or not, are going through kind of a a tri annual background check process so that within that tenure cycle, we're still checking in on those educators that have active certificates.
So I think the only thing that I just want to just note is is I I just want to make sure that there isn't a sort of unintended message of lessening expectations of our teachers on this, especially as we've also come out to encourage um a greater swath of individuals who have had different sort of training or or experience to come in and help in our shortage times during COVID. And so I I just wanted to sort of throw that out there as, you know, are we are we sort of sending inadvertently a message that there's this sort of backing off of our expectations of teachers? Does that make sense?
Absolutely. I guess my 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 feeling or my counterpoint would be that I I don't think at any point are we changing the expectations for the requirements for the profession or to advance within the profession. I think if anything, it's an acknowledgement to educators regarding how much they're trying to balance in both their professional life and their personal life and creating more kind of flexibility within their ability to meet those requirements.
Thank you. Other questions or comments from the committee members before we one move this to to go forward and then vote?
Mrs. Martha, I just have a general question about the four that made it to us. Are there other things that really have popped up in the last year that need to be addressed that aren't on this list that we are hearing or it's too early to be a policy development? I just say this coming from the fact that we're going into year two of an emergency. Doesn't seem to go away. And making sure that we're covering our basis as you go in front of the legislature for meetings, et cetera.
Sure, so when we put together our legislative proposals, we ask the various parts of the agency what it is that is really burning, especially this year with everything that's going on and the strain that is on each one of our departments with our limited staff. We ask for folks just to kind of this year, bring together the things that they really thought that they needed to rise up to the level of bringing it before the board for your approval. Obviously, as the legislative session progresses, I'm a liaison for both the department and for the board with the legislature. And I keep you all apprised of issues that come to our attention and of bills that are being raised and make you aware of the votes that are happening and and just keep you up to date throughout the course of the session. But these were the four proposals that we thought with everything going on, this is what we're gonna bring to the board this year to bring forward to the legislature.
Okay, I follow the side, thank you. Do we, you guys have a sense of what is gonna come at us from the other side, from the outside, the legislative side?
I'm not sure. I mean, I think that that we may end up seeing more bills pertaining to remote learning and and whether that's gonna be an allowable thing or not an allowable thing. That's come up a lot in in the interim since last session as it is, it was not something that was passed um as being permissible. I think that may come up. I think we may see more things having to do with um children's social emotional learning and behavioral or mental health. I know that's come up a lot. Those are the only ones that are popping off the top of my head as as being, you know, things that are really being at the forefront.
Okay, thank you for the update.
All right, well, not hearing any other questions related to this particular proposal moving forward. Can I have a motion to to move this this fourth one forward?
So. Second.
Second.
We've had discussion. Mike, you want to go around the table?
Sure. Dr. Dubois Walton? Your microphone's off.
All right, I'm muted. Yes.
Ms. Prue?
Yes.
Ms. Burr?
Yes.
Mr. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Seavy?
Yes.
Okay.
Great. Thank you all.
Great, thank you, Laura, so much. And um let me just pause to ask if there's anything else before we close. All right.
I think there's a hand from Bob.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Bob.
I don't think his audio is working now.
Who is it?
Maybe you can put it in the chat.
Bob for Friday. Yeah, Bob, if you're able to put something into the chat. There.
This isn't a public meeting, is it?
Yes.
Oh, this is a public meeting?
Yep.
Yeah.
So this is not relevant for for the session's set of proposals, but more is the longer term. I hope as we're moving through these conversations with the districts about um their racial imbalance, that we're doing it with an eye toward some new language or reform or new effort we might recommend out of this committee. So I I hope we're thinking in that way. I think it's time for an update on how we're approaching school desegregation. No one may want to touch it, but I'd like us to think about it.
I agree. I'm wondering what else.
No one wants to.
I'll touch it.
I'm wondering if there's something else we we have in our in our quiver or our toolbox with regard to that.
That's what I'd like to think of. I mean, it's quite clear as we work with these handful of districts and if we even get them to racial balance, like the notion that somehow Connecticut is in racial balance at that point. It's just, yeah, obviously, there's there's a lot more to be done. So I just throw that out there as something to think about.
Thanks, Karen. Well, certainly, certainly, I agree. And uh from the reactions of other members on my screen that I see, some looks like there's um additional agreement there. And we have at least allowed Bob more opportunity to put something in the chat if he was going to, but not seeing anything appear there. I think I'm going to move to close the meeting. I appreciate everybody coming together for a little bit longer than we we thought we would even have, but it was what we needed. So thanks again, and I will adjourn this meeting and look forward to seeing everybody in January. Happy holidays, all.
Happy holidays.
Thank you. Happy holidays.